Everybody get a chance to look over the minutes from last month, I entertain a motion to approve. Ron with the motion to approve the minutes. Shane with the second, all those in favor of the minutes? Everybody's in favor. Uh, everybody get a chance to look over the bills. Uh, Rick makes a motion to pay the bills. Ron with the second, all those in favor of paying the bills? Everybody in favor of paying the bills? Alright, that brings us down to scout.
Down to the house.
Yeah.
I'll look over the subdivision of Tucker Creek Park. And what I'm asking is a no drive-through policy from nine P M. to seven A M. Just because there's a bunch of kids that just like to circle through at like nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night when, you know, I get up and I go to work at early time. So, I'm sure everybody else don't care for the noise of just, you know, just deleted trucks and loud exhaust and everything. I've went and made a petition, you guys can read it if you want, but I've had everybody's signature except for two people. One would be Gina Barton, but she fell and broke her arm, so she's out of pocket. And then, uh, the Fettis house, I give them, just because the mom, uh, Jerry and Amanda's mom answered the door and she said she didn't want to sign them. And everyone asked Brad or Amanda. But, uh, that's what I'm asking, you know, I've got cameras, I've tried law enforcement and everything, it's just, it's loud, it's hard to sleep. I don't know if it's possible, but it's just a-
Question, are we trying to close down the city street or the city park?
No drive-through.
Street.
Uh, it's just the street. So, basically, no drive-through policy, from what I've researched, is if you don't have a destination, like, I know the court that closes at eleven, the tennis court. I mean, if you're going to the tennis court, we can't stop that, you know? But, just don't drive through, just to circle, is what I'm getting at. Like, if you're not going to, uh, you know, Barton's house, or Hagwood, or even my house, uh, you know, don't be over there driving throughs. I'll read to you. The proposed exceptions. This restriction, restriction should not apply to residents and their guests, emergency vehicles, delivery to service vehicles, public utility access. Which, I don't know why I think of that, but it's just, if you don't have a purpose over there, just don't drive through, is what I'm requesting.
I don't really think we can do that. I think, I mean, I got a ship circle and they drive around dead.
Yeah.
And they would, some of them wanted it closed, we'd have to close it. At the square, we control the traffic on the square, so if you don't have business on the square, you shouldn't be driving around the square. So, I don't think we can do that.
Are we talking about the street that goes on up in front of Hagwood's house and all the way down?
Tucker Creek Lane, Hagwood and Laurel Lane. See, the reason I'm asking is because it's a subdivision over there.
Well, the ship circles the subdivision same way, and they've circled that hundreds of times a night.
Yeah.
I mean, it lights it up after a while, they don't do it so much, or you learn to sleep with it, so.
Yeah.
But I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
I mean, because that opens us up to have to close down.
We'd be closing much.
They'd close a bunch of streets. I mean, I lived next to a fertilizer plant, I knew when I moved in, I get dust, I get smoke, I get feed, but I don't worry about it because it's, you know, I knew it was there when I moved in.
Yeah. I thought you were talking about the street going down into the park. That, that, oh, yeah, not that, okay.
Well, that probably, that probably, that could be closed, just like we do in the park back there, at a certain time of night, see? That's-
That could, but, but, yeah.
Because you have no business in there at all.
Or we still shutting the gates on the park back there.
Which they really don't go down to the park, they just circle along through.
Yeah, but they all like to turn it in.
It's just a public street.
Turn it in there by, turn it in there by the one, turn it in there by First Baptist and coming back out by Big.
I mean, we all grew up first with this where, by the time of the weekend. I did.
No, that's fine, guys, I just, you know, we don't know until you ask.
Right.
I hear you.
Alright, well, you, uh, got anything else for us?
I think we have a problem.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah. I just, you know, I'm pretty done with outside of it all, guys. Alright, thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you building houses, so keep going.
What's that?
Appreciate you building houses.
Appreciate you building houses, keep going.
Yeah, well, I thought we were building another one, I think.
Did you talk today without you now?
No, I didn't ask if that was part of the subdivision or not.
Well, I can tell it is not gonna be under the same laws as it does.
Okay.
That's our three.
Perfect. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
See you, guys.
Take care, Scott. Alright, that brings us down to union input. You guys got anything? That brings us down to fire department, uh, raising a membership fee, fifty dollars, starting, uh, January one of twenty-six.
Yeah.
Everybody's done it, okay? I started, but everybody's a little bit, we're gonna, we wanna get to a certain place, but we don't wanna do it one time.
Where are we at now?
We're at forty-five.
Okay.
We're at fifty, even fifty. Rover's doing it, Thomas is doing it, uh, there's gonna do their deal. So, uh, somebody gonna make a motion.
Slowly.
No, but, you know, I'm saying, we don't wanna go from forty-five to seventy-five, everybody just have a corner here. So, just a little, that type of motion. Alright, Rick with the motion to raise the membership fee. Ron with the second, all those in favor? Everybody's in favor of doing it. Anything else on fire department?
No, I'm thinking of, alright, police.
Got the tires ordered?
Okay.
Got his tire order, so, nothing else on police?
Parks.
Nothing on parks?
Streets.
Uh, the part up here by the school, where I put that rip raft?
What?
Yeah.
The young trucks keep running off in there, spitting that stuff out there. Well, uh, I was thinking about that, uh. There is that coal mix, just dump it in there right there where they're running it off.
That's what, that'd be a good idea.
I mean, if they cut that corner and sharp, they're gonna be taking out that telephone building there.
I know, it's the real over.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they, they, they don't shut you to the day, they go out and run.
I could sharpen this rip bar and stick down in there, I mean, that's-
Got that corner to the end. Don't remember doing that.
Yeah, going up, they swing in, it's just every, and once in a while it'd be gone, and the next thing you know, it's run everywhere. Yeah, I, I seen a young truck meet a person on that the other day, and he's, he had to.
Well, you know, most people that come from this, from my place that way.
They won't get over.
They won't get over, that is a car link, from the, sometimes, and if you're trying to turn in, you gotta go in like that, you know?
But, yeah. I used to be so much fun, you get that spent hours.
Yeah.
You get that, just, I'm very cheap.
That's what I was saying. Was there no policemen at that time?
Yeah.
Well, there was.
They can't hear you.
Well, mercy. Alright, last, last week when we had a question about the, uh, about Kinder Lane going up toward, uh, where Cody McIntyre used to live, and up in there where Greg Kenley lives. That is actually a street. I didn't remember that, but Rusty, uh, talked to me, and after he talked to me, I remembered it. When Cody was on here, we, we paid or went in partners or some sort with them to pave that. With the agreement that once it was done, the city would take ownership of that street and maintain it. So, with it being a city street, if we want to put a stop sign down there, we would need to put a stop.
We would have to have a stop sign.
And a ci- and a city's name sign.
Okay, so what happens?
It, yeah. Comes to a state highways, the state has to do it.
Has to do a stop.
State has to let, let it with the street.
You'll probably have to, they have to have breakaway signs and stuff or whatever, I guess, the special signs.
Or you can get us all to put it up.
He'll put it up, Jason will put it up, because it won't probably stay there, but.
They have to, it's our street.
It's on the deal.
Do you, I hope it does. So, why ain't we had one all this time, or?
We did have it one time, it wasn't one years ago.
It ain't been there since?
Been a long time, but it was, Doug said the same thing, he put it up once.
Yeah. Long time ago.
Yeah.
That was done.
They know that opens up to city streets, so they can get it out there.
Yeah.
You drive right, come out.
Where does he stop at?
Right there.
He stops right there.
At the curb. So it don't go over there.
But that first part is the city street.
So, it's just straight up there to where it turns?
Yeah. Well, just back this side of that, actually.
Because I knew Cody got him by two loads, because he said that they put it on there without asking, and we don't think.
He was on the board.
Well, he wasn't when that was done.
He talked him into putting two loads on there. Probably said he could maintenance it after they screwed it up, you know?
Yeah. That's all, or? What, what, what? Daryl, it was Daryl, Daryl went in and put down a bunch of coal mix on it, with a box plate, and you can imagine what that had.
Pretty rough.
Well, when you do a street like it is like all the rest of them, it's been done a ton here.
It, it's one.
Homeowner paid for his strip of it.
It wasn't the end of this one down here, we didn't, we didn't count it in the whole program.
Yeah, but we, we did adopt that after we-
Count it, took it back over.
That been handled from?
Yeah, yeah, we went rip the whole heck out of it.
They done that too, yeah.
So, all we need, if they're gonna do the sign, we just need a, if you're gonna, it's named Kinder Lane or whatever, that's Kinder something, if you wanna put, get a sign. We, we already got one that one.
I got it last time.
Yeah, Rick. Alright, so we already got the street signed, the state just needs to do this.
Since that's new, I'll just let you call that in and move it up and tell them where it's at and what to put it up there, because I don't know, I, I mean, I ain't got authority to tell them.
You got to pull up, you didn't work there.
But we, we got the streets out, just the stop signs, all we need, right?
Stop sign or the pole and the-
Do we give, oh, it's different, we don't have, we don't have a stop sign, they clear it up?
I would think they would, I mean, I don't know.
I think they would too.
Just ask the bill. Ask the bill, we'll do whatever we need to do.
They got them up the street on it.
Circle up there.
I mean, I would think they'd put it in, but I can't promise you that.
Alright, anything else on streets? Alright, water?
Uh, our whales been down for like, three weeks, our, our communication with our whales, it's been down for like, three or four weeks. It's gonna cost them four, five thousand dollars to get it fixed. And I'm like, that's the, yeah.
Water pump, it's just-
Yeah, we have to do, we have to do it manually, yeah, we have to turn it on manually, turn it off manually, uh, it won't do it by itself. You know, we, we just have to keep an eye on the pressure. Sandy's our watchdog, she'll be the first one runs out, I'll be the second, you know, so.
Top, top of the hill?
Yeah, everybody top.
I already have a crappy one, for sure.
So, so, we've been running that way for three or four weeks now, and I might send all these computerized parts in. They would come down and look at it, but it'd cost us thousands of dollars for them to come from New York to do it.
And you know what's wrong with it?
We're pretty sure we know what's wrong with it, so I'm gonna send the parts to them, they're gonna test them. If it comes out that's not it, then they're gonna send somebody to look at it.
Okay.
You know?
How do they do it?
Can do it?
Yeah. So, and, and it's-
Any motion to send them parts?
No.
No, we're kinda already doing it. It has to be done.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Already a fall rolling.
And it could save a lot of money.
Yeah, it could hurt, hurt, do something else.
And, and the people that make these parts, you know, because they're some kind of radio communication, they want to sell your communication, so there ain't a whole lot of people that knows how to do them anymore.
Yeah.
You know, because it's like a lost trade, I guess, of the business.
Is that, was that redone in New Deal?
Yeah, yeah, ten years ago, ten years ago. And they were basing them out then, and we got the end of it basing out. Same with our meters when that happened, we had the end of everything.
But they worked very good there.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyways, gotta send all this, and it's gonna take three or four weeks for them to figure it out and send me all this stuff back. So, we're looking deer season for you to go in again.
I just make it hold up a while.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be after your six of our fix. Yeah, yeah. But, but, but while we're doing that, you guys are paying somebody to, to go turn it on and off, you know? I'm doing it at four o'clock in the morning, on, in the weekends, we have to come in twice.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, in the process, you guys are paying somebody to come in.
But if Ron's gonna run out, Sandy's gonna really tip around.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Jerry, going at four, five.
I'm usually, I'm always just taking it out properly.
It pumps about sev- it pumps about seventy-five, the one whale by itself, pumps about seventy-five hundred gallons an hour. You know, so, so, and we're pumping, we've, we're letting it run about thirteen, fourteen hours a day, we're pumping right at a hundred thousand gallons a day. And we're pretty, we're pretty close on what, what we use, you know, we use somewhere around ninety to a hundred and ten, somewhere in there. Because we just wash the pressure, and we're, we're always over that limit, we're, we're above normal pressure right now.
A lot of water you just, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I was just curious. It's amazing. You hold no water, you flush out real fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you got a water leak, you know.
Yeah.
Well, the average person uses a hundred gallons of water a day, you know, the average person. What I've got figured, we, the average person in Alton uses seventy-nine point eight gallons a day, you know?
So, I'd say if you're home all day, you're as bad as ever, right?
Yeah, yeah. And being a retirement comedian, we use a little bit yet less than most people, you know, but.
Average.
Yeah, average, yeah.
I probably drink about two hundred gallons a day.
Yeah, dog, I've got five kids.
But you got kids, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Anything else on water?
No.
Sewer?
No, we're doing good.
Uh, pay request for two hundred and two thousand eight ninety-eight seventy, right here in front of you.
Okay.
Just a three board sign.
We're, we can't get our generator, that I was talking about last month, it costs too much.
I need to suck.
From, and so, I'm gonna buy it.
Just right side where your name is.
Right on the side where my name is.
That we can just drop in there, just go close in there, pump the top of the deal, we're about to grab you bed from there, if something happens, that's still seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah. So, so that's the route I went from generator.
Yeah.
Alright, so I need a motion on the, uh, uh.
Pay request.
Pay request. I like, Rick with the motion. Shane with the second, all those in favor? Everybody's in favor. Are they all done with all that?
Uh, they're gonna have to come back and do some more, they were just waiting on me to find out what was going to do with the rest of our money. So, they're gonna come back, and then they're gonna come in.
We'll make it, right?
Yeah, but it's very small now, you know, now, now we're looking at fifty, seventy thousand, you know? And I've already spent half of that, I'm sure, on telling them to come back and do some more lining, so now we're down to about twenty, twenty-five. They're gonna come in within a week or two and do what we call smoke testing.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody's ever known that's done, people are gonna start complaining.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and-
Tell me what they suck me off.
It's next week sometime, most likely, and we're gonna try to find, and they're only gonna do like, twenty thousand feet, my priority, where we want it, but we're gonna try to hit all the low line areas. Next to the creeks, any major runoffs, no storm drains and stuff, to try to find out if any of them are getting into the sewer. You know, so we're gonna try to get all them areas, and-
We fixed a ton of them years ago.
Yeah.
Man Keith.
Did, did we ever, did we ever get anything done with the Dollar General? Leaks that they had?
No, I bet you guys were working on that, or you guys were gonna send a letter to corporate or something.
Send a letter, so that nothing's, or anything at all?
We didn't send a letter to them, you know?
I don't even talk about it, I don't know if we ever did.
I have to do that, move it from front to end. I'll be, Justin, try and do a letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we were reading.
Huh? I don't know if I even talked to anybody about that. I think of it.
Anything else on sewer?
Yeah.
Alright, city administration input?
Uh, Ruth Little's, they, every year, they have always used the V F W for like, their Christmas for family, and she's on it. Again, this year, if y'all would allow her to use, use it on December the sixth. Because I think they always do the first weekend and December. I told her there was no tables and stuff, she said that if we would let her use it, that they would make do with what was there, even if they had to bring their own chairs and stuff, and just kinda sit around and hang out.
And she told me that they would get their own tables, because she mentioned to me what they said.
Yeah, I think she's got two herself, I think it's what she told me. But, I told her I'd ask, but I didn't know, I mean, it needs to be cleaned, but.
I don't know if this would be suddenly going to fit anything, but I've got a bunch of booths and tables. I don't have any, I think they've been stored for hunting years, probably, age of them. Huh?
You're gonna tell your age here.
Well, no, they came, they came out of the bar out there, the Arnold's Bar.
That's your, tell your age.
Huh? Well, I ended up, I mean, they're, they're in a, they always got in the storage and, and, I don't know, I'll get them out and look at them, I mean, I've-
And that's somebody that can-
I've been trying to find somebody that'd want to use those things, with their leather, their, uh.
Wonder how wide they are.
Oh, the old booths, yeah.
Restaurant booths.
Yeah, the old restaurant booths. Just turn around and settle against the wall, then just put the tables in front of them.
Just a few, I could do that.
Are they?
I'll, I'll, yeah.
You have booths and tables both?
Yeah.
Just put it up.
I'll, I'll dig them out, guys, I, I just haven't, I haven't done it, because, uh, I, you know, I've offered it to some people, and, I mean, I, I want it.
Well, then that goes back to the bill, do we keep it heated?
Yeah, we gotta heat it if you're gonna do that.
Nope.
Well, um, we never discussed like that amount, for us renting it out or anything either, or how we wanted to handle that.
I, I probably forgot this, probably already do, what, how's the heat?
Gas.
Gas, uh-huh.
It's got a furnace, it's got a furnace. It's got a furnace.
It's got an old gas furnace.
Oh, I'll probably need to find out who's got the, because I didn't do anything with the gas.
Yeah, I think it's got no gas, he's got a bottle on the north side, I think that where it's at.
The tank?
Do you know what names on there?
I know, you and Rick was the main ones talking, but I thought you'd set somewhere around fifty bucks, is what you said.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, we set fifty bucks.
So, then we talked about making the deposit, and then when they cleaned it, we get the deposit back, yeah.
Yeah.
So, get fifty, I hope.
Well, we gotta get something out of it, for sure.
If you do fifty, then you get twenty-five back, or?
Well, no.
No, you get fifty, and they, they say they put a hundred down, they keep the fifty, and they get fifty back.
Yeah, and they clean it up, yeah.
That's what lots of people do.
Yeah, that way you don't-
Because I, it's probably gonna take us at least fifty dollars to pay somebody to go clean it, if they don't.
That's what I'm, that's what I told Amy, I was only trying to catch her on sometime, and, I don't really understand how it's supposed to benefit someone. Spend one all night, I don't really understand that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if whoever rents it.
Yeah.
Had clean, has to clean it after they're done, or they don't get to it.
But I mean, when it ain't used for two, three months, it's not good just like this, you know?
Yeah, you're gonna have to pay somebody to go and clean it up much longer, yeah.
I mean, it just, hard to make sense out of it, but.
I didn't see it.
So, now do I keep the water on, do we put heat to it, or do we shut it off, like, till it gets done?
Would you say she's the one that's under, till she wants to go there?
Uh, she said, and she said, they all extreme afterwards.
But it needs to be cleaned, but it down there, too.
Yeah, yeah, but you-
Then you need water on.
Yeah, she's out, she's in.
How is, how is the water set up in there, I mean, where, what are the, what, you don't know?
I don't know. I, I, I was just gonna shut it off, I was gonna yank the meter, like, when you drop back there.
If it'll all drain.
If it all drain. We go, we go ahead and shoot air.
Yeah, it may be pockets of, you know, the, the old mines. Back then, they didn't worry about drainage, because it never, not at all. Because it'd be awful.
I see, I get it. He's saying, I, I-
Like, plastic.
Shoot, I remember when I was going, I doubt it, I was a work kid, when I was a kid.
Will you look on the gas tank, see what names on it too, if you're ever there in the morning?
And what all's in there to clean, like?
It's really just a big open-
Is there not, I mean, is it gonna be hard for me and Al to go in there, I mean, we clean the pool and everything over here.
That's what I said to do to start with, because, I mean, we have workers already, I mean.
I don't care if you're gonna do it anytime, I just think it would be.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, they do, yeah.
They were great little mates, they were great little mates.
Well, I mean, I just did, I almost-
We cleaned the Airbnb, I did, I like shop vac.
Is it carpet floors, concrete floors?
No, it's concrete.
So, we can pretty much, is it sheet rock walls?
Uh, block walls, I block, I block.
So, we can stay pressure washing in there?
Yeah, if I have some time, all you need to do is just sweep it.
Sweep mopping, I'm saying, it's not that bad.
No, it ain't that like that.
I mean, that's what we did in the poolhouse, we just go in there, water goes.
It won't be that much clean, yeah.
I'll tell you what, go in there and look at it, if you wanna clean it, you'll, y'all can clean it, if not, we'll get somebody else.
I'm sure we can do it, I mean.
It wouldn't be hard, I mean, it's a open spot.
I swear, there won't be lockstep. Clean around, it just, ain't nobody been in it, so it's, you know.
It's apparently embarrassing when you get a bunch of workers and you hire someone else to work, I mean.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm saying, you don't wanna hire your police officer to-
Yeah, Rusty don't care.
To sweep up, or pick up the litter at the park, or something like that.
That's just going to sit anywhere, dude.
I heard Rusty clean anything. We clean that for you though.
Oh, no, brother, why do you want to clean?
I think he might paint that car yet.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, he washes it. I like it though, I like it.
You know what, I'm really impressed, what I see from him, though, I like it, he's traveling a lot.
He is, he is out, and he is based in-
He's traveling a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what I was proud of, he even served one of his best friends, I mean.
The what?
Not everybody'll do, well, I mean, this kid was one of his real good friends.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, that's hard to do for somebody, but he did it.
You gotta do that.
You know?
Ain't gonna just bug the law.
No.
There's a lot of people that should think they are them.
I know, you're right, they do.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of people would do that.
I mean, I always said, I remember, I remember when Nathan Murphy stopped, uh, Hagwood, why, for Route sixty-seven down bypass.
Oh, boy.
I told, I said, she gotta pay the ticket, or dealing with the, you know? And Ron, and so, and, and he said, Richard said, that's true, we gotta do it. He said, I can talk about it here, but I can't talk about it at all.
If we put something out, if that thing's available to rent, though, we're gonna, we're gonna get some people to want to rent it.
Put the C H O's phone number on it?
Well, something, I mean, I don't know what, what, I mean, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna keep the-
You can drive over it.
Yeah.
I mean, a sign on there wouldn't hurt nothing.
No.
I mean, it needs that.
If you're gonna have it available to rent, you better, you gotta, you might as well rent it.
Do you think fifty's too cheap?
Exactly right.
No, I, I mean.
We, we need to at least have our power.
I think if, I think if we make, I think if we, yeah.
Yes.
I think if we make it a hundred dollars a round with fit, if they, if they clean it up after theirselves, they're gonna get that fifty back and work even fifty every time. I mean, all you gotta do is probably rent it twice a month, pay the electric on it, I can't imagine electric.
I always, I always like the, I always like the, uh, deposit more than the rent. Because somebody may look at it and say, well, at least let them have it, that hundred dollars, and you're gonna have to pay somebody sixty seven.
Like a hundred fifty dollar cleaning, like a hundred fifty dollar.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna get it all back.
Get a hundred back.
You know?
So you're saying do a higher deposit.
Higher deposit than rent, yeah, because some people, well, I don't care another fifty dollars, cause they're not gonna clean, you know?
We can do that.
And it's gonna cost us that much to get it cleaned?
Yeah, you're not gonna probably get clean for fifty dollars.
We do, we do a hundred and get mine, you know?
Hundred dollar deposit for cleaning and fifty dollars for rent.
I mean, they're gonna get that back anyway.
If it's clean, they get the hundred back.
Yeah, no, 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 we got a hundred dollars to pay somebody to go clean it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I'd go clean it for a hundred bucks, I'm sure somebody else would.
Yeah, I know, I'm confused, what do you guys think of that?
Okay.
So we wanna do a hundred?
Fifty dollar rent, it's gonna be a hundred fifty dollars rented, you get a hundred of it back, you did that right?
Yeah.
If it's clean.
If it's clean.
If it's clean, yeah.
A hundred fifty and a hundred back if you have it.
Cause I know some people, you get big crowds and it's like, fine, we'll clean it if I'm sick, cause they don't pay helping me, you know?
You got one person that's, that's staying clean, and there'll be people that will clean it better than we do when they go in, you know?
Oh, yeah. Well, tomorrow when we get the keys, guys care if I go make spare for Dawn, I mean.
Yeah, go ahead.
Anybody else need a spare?
Everybody get a big one.
Okay.
They won't just holler at me when you get the key tomorrow, and I'll go up there with you.
Okay.
Okay, and, and just, I, I mean, not.
Not in the four o'clock, baby, cause I'm not coming, you.
Yeah. Let's, let's plan on that.
About four, and then I go and get.
You better bring the key up tonight, man.
You don't want to.
We, we'll watch that play over.
All right, and then y'all approved for the, um, the SB five ninety-three vote, where if nobody runs against you, we all have to file. It is on there for you, just your signature, but it's already been approved.
It means all of us?
Yeah.
Did you just have to sign it, or we all have to sign it?
No, you, I'll have to.
Oh.
It's that when you got it, the other one.
So you're gonna show them where it's at in this one here?
You mean if we don't have any.
Yeah, you don't have to have a ledger, nobody runs against you.
Yeah.
Take your money, of course.
Do I need, do I also need to sign down here?
No.
Just me on the sign at the bottom, or, I mean, I don't know, cause I ain't, cause I'm not technically the mayor, but I'm mayor protein.
I don't think you.
I mean, I signed at the top where it says mayor protein.
I don't think you will at the bottom.
All right. Yeah, and then you'll have to mark your vote. Yeah.
And that's all I got.
Yeah, so I'll put a change there.
No.
It's really good, it's really good, I'll tell you what, let me, let me tell you a story. I have retired from the mayor position twice already, and got a hundred percent of my weight.
This probably.
So you'll get a hundred percent.
They're gonna bomb it, has that yours or?
Yeah, no, it's.
Yeah, you get a hundred percent of your, of your salary.
Yeah, well, all right.
Every time, yeah.
So you're gonna be doing good.
Yeah. All right, so we got that signed. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
You got anything to say, Nick?
Yeah, but you want to come out and close it.
Okay. All right, so, I guess make the motion, go ahead and say, section, along with the motion, close.
Thank you.
Root with the second.